To the Cupertino Planning Commission of June 24, 2025. I hope you will join us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng.
Present.
Commissioner Linska.
Present.
Commissioner Sharf.
Present.
Vice Chair Casulcharon.
Present.
Chair Rao.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the June 10, 2025 Planning Commission minutes. If I may get a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item is postponements. I don't believe we have any postponements.
No postponements, Chair.
The next item is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law prohibits the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, any oral comments?
We have one speaker in person, Gil Doyle. Welcome, Gil.
I'm here to talk about a conditional use permit that Tessellations School has applied for. I live near the school and represent 29 households that have signed a petition that asks the city to deny Tessellations' request for permission to operate a high school at the Old Regent Elementary site. In December 2023, Tessellations was granted a conditional use permit that allowed it to teach pre-K through nine. Tessellations promised to move grade nine to a separate campus in the fall of 2025, quoting Tessellations. Note that high school will only be ninth grade on the current campus and only for one year. In future years, we plan to move the high school to another site. So from then onward, the current campus will be pre-K through eighth, unquote. Tessellations got permission to teach a maximum of 300 students at the Regent site and told the city council that it wasn't interested in adding more students, again quoting Tessellations. In terms of our philosophy on the school, we don't really want any more than 300 students just for our emotional safety and comfort. There's social evidence that that's a really great number to stay at in terms of the population knowing each other, unquote. Tessellations is applying now for a revised conditional use permit that would allow it to grow to 425 students. It's asking for permission to add grades 10, 11, and 12. Despite these plans to grow the school, Tessellations says that it will keep its staff at its current max of 85. When Tessellations opened in 2023, it had 141 students. Today, it has 268 students and plans to grow to 425. There are traffic and parking problems today that will only get worse if another 125 cars are added to the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup. Remember, Tessellations is not a neighborhood school. Nearly all of its students come from outside the area and must be driven to school or will drive themselves. Before the city considers allowing the school to expand, residents around the school would like to see the city and school address existing traffic and parking problems. Tessellations itself has come up with a great idea that it should be encouraged to pursue. The school has talked about having parents drop off and pick up their kids at an improvised shuttle station, New Life Church, for instance. The school would then shuttle the children in its minivans between this shuttle station and the Regent campus. The residents near the school like this idea and hope that the city will encourage Tessellations to pursue it. Tessellations' application for a revised CUP requires that a traffic study be done. When that happens in the fall, Tessellations' shuttle program should be considered as one very good option to fixing both.
Thank you. That is your time.
Both traffic and parking problems at the school.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
We have one hand raised on Zoom, Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening, and I appreciate your service to the community. It should be no surprise that I'm calling about the proposed purchase of the McCallan Terrace Apartments on McCallan Road, which has 94 units, and it is pretty much the lowest rent, some of the lowest rents that's available in Cupertino. I've done some comparisons and found only 14 comparable units available in the city that had at least 1,000 square feet. Their two-bedroom, two-bath are $11.50, and that were also two-bedroom, two-bath, and that would propose less than 10% increase in rent. The College District has told us, well, we'll honor their leases, but the fact of the matter is that there's a law called AB 1482 that says, you know, once you have a lease and you're going month to month, you cannot evict somebody just for fun. You need what's called just cause. And what the Foothill Deans Community College District intends to do is to rent to people who are younger, prettier, or just people that they like better. And then they say that some of them will also potentially be staff. It's wrong. It's wrong to displace our residents. Another excuse that they made is, well, none of them are, it's not currently affordable housing. Well, not under the state rules, but it is more affordable than elsewhere. And then they said, oh, well, you know, Prometheus, which previously is the current owner, has other properties in the city that they could use. Well, everybody is going to lose their walk to school less than half a mile, K through 12. But the other thing is, I looked at the rents for Prometheus for similarly sized units, and there you're looking at a good 20% increase in rent. So really, what we're talking about is losing something that's really important to our community, and, you know, many people call this the missing middle, right? So, you know, we've been misled. You know, we're spending our tax dollars, the bond money, to evict our residents, and it's just wrong, and I'm really hoping that the city can put in a policy. I have asked the chancellor, how is it under AB 1482 that they can be evicting my neighbors? Because generally purchasers cannot do that. Maybe there's a loophole for the College District. I don't know. What I do know is it's wrong, and unfortunately, the district hasn't figured that out. They're being bullies, and I'm begging you to please protect our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. Madam City Clerk, anymore?
We have no speaker cards in person and no hands raised on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item 2, which is the study session regarding possible updates to the oversized vehicle parking restrictions in the public right-of-way. The recommended action is to recommend that the city council consider the planning commission's recommendation to amend Sections 11.24.130, Section 11.24.200, Section 11.28.10, and Section 11.28.20 of the municipal code to enhance the current prohibition on parking oversized vehicles for more than 72 hours on any public street. Before we go to the staff report, do we have any exported disclosures from commissioners that you would like to share at this time? No disclosures. Are we required to check for exported disclosures?
It doesn't hurt.
All right. I do have some disclosures. I did knock on doors in the businesses around the area that were impacted by the RVs. So I had a chance to speak to the director of the Happy Day daycare that is located at Psych and Stevens Creek, and the director has been at that facility for 25 years and had a chance to share her observations on how the area has changed over those 25 years. She also had a chance to share how they lose enrollments or potential enrollments because of a community that has concerns. So I will share more on my exported disclosures from their input later in the session, but I did want to share, I talked to Happy Day. I also talked to a business at the Marina Plaza, and I had a chance to get input from, I believe it was Aloft, when I met them earlier in another meeting, that they had some input on that, and they sent in some input as well. So that's my disclosures. So with that, no other disclosures?
So I spoke with the deputy sheriff of West Valley Division, asked a few questions about enforcement in general. I did also speak with the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church about their rotating safe car park, and I have just generally driven through the area.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So with that, if no other disclosures, we will go to the staff report if there is one.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight, we have our interim city attorney, Floyd Andrews, here, who will be making the presentation for this item. And with that, Floyd.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So we've talked about this subject in the past, and I have a presentation. I think it's up on your screen very well.
And I want to make sure it's shared on the Zoom as well. Does it take a while to load on Zoom?
Any Lindsay's checking on that?
Yep, we can see it. Thank you.
Perfect.
Oh, very good. Thank you. So I'll just quickly go over some of the background and some of the challenges that the current situation is presenting to the city and the city's residents. Currently, we have a 72-hour parking limit in the city, which means that you can park a vehicle on a city street for 72 hours, and then you are supposed to move the vehicle. It doesn't say for how far away, but you have to move the vehicle and leave it in the new location for 24 hours before you move it back. This creates a number of loopholes for the city in terms of enforcement, because when the 72 hours are over, you can move your vehicle for just, you know, half a foot or something, and that counts as moving the vehicle. So it doesn't really have vehicles actually moving away from the location, and so vehicles can stay in very much the same location for very long periods of time, generally, actually indefinitely. And when you move the vehicle, when it comes back, the 72-hour clock starts yet again. This also, staff has noticed that in some instances, specifically with RVs that park on some of our city streets, that the RV owners will coordinate their movements so that at the appointed time, they will all move their RVs one vehicle length, and then the one at the front goes to the back so that the community of people living on that street remain on that street for extended periods of time. The problem areas are near the Target on Alvez between Sache and Bandley, and then another difficult area is Stelling and Rainbow. And then we also have RVs parking at other areas throughout the city. Generally, the city has a complaint-based enforcement program because we don't have signage throughout the city, and unless you have signs warning the public of the parking restrictions, you can't enforce the restrictions until you let them know about the restrictions. And so basically, the way it works is staff will notice that there is a vehicle parked, and they'll notice that it's been there for, you know, a few days, and at that point, that they've tracked it for being there for three days, 72 hours, they'll tag the vehicle, which gives the vehicle another 72 hours to remain in that location, and then at that point, staff will cite the vehicle. One interesting thing about the vehicles parking in the Cupertino area is generally the citations are paid. So when staff has noticed that when somebody receives a citation, they will then move the vehicle and pay the citation, and then, you know, eventually, they may come back to that same location. So that's kind of the background. I talked about our current enforcement. One way we do it, we don't mark the tires with chalk. Apparently, there's some, you know, legal complication with that. The way staff marks the tires is they'll put maybe a paperclip or something on top of the tire and then come back a few days later, and if the item is still there on the tire, then they will know that the vehicle hasn't moved. Because it's so easy to evade enforcement, we have very few citations really going to our large vehicles. Most of the citations in the city are for, you know, vehicles that don't fit into this oversized vehicle category. So we generally are getting about 200 complaints, but most of our complaints about vehicles parking too long on the street are associated with these oversized vehicles. It's just that few of them actually get ticketed because the people and the vehicles understand the rules and they know how to evade them. In the staff report that I prepared, I left out the oversized vehicle definition. It's the same definition that we had last time we were here, and whatever the commission decides to do in terms of ordinances or not, we'll write that into the ordinance, whatever the definition eventually comes to be. So on April 22, this body also heard this item, and during that conversation, staff was advising requiring vehicles to vacate the location before the 72-hour mark and move 1,500 feet, not just a small amount or an inch or two feet, 1,500 feet from the location for 24 hours. And then we were also suggesting that parking be prohibited, oversized vehicle parking be prohibited within 100 feet of residential districts, and that was for various reasons, but one in particular was to hopefully prevent the oversized vehicles in the commercial areas moving into the residential areas and potentially creating more of a concern than they would be in the commercial area. And then we also restricted parking within 100 feet of consumer-facing retail, and that was, I think, the idea that those vehicles might discourage, you know, people going into the retail establishments. And in this scenario, we understood that to enforce an ordinance that had different restrictions on different parts of the city would require, if we wanted signage, if we wanted that sort of ability to immediately cite entities, that we would have to have signage throughout the city, which would be quite costly. And so the other option is not to have signs as we currently do, which impedes enforcement. At that meeting, we did have residents join the meeting who own RVs and really appreciate the ability to park their RV in front of their home for 72 hours, either when they're loading or unloading from a trip, or maybe if they have family members or other friends, they would like to be able to park their RV in front of their home or in their area for 72 hours. And we had created a recommendation that there would be no parking like that in the residential area because we were hoping not to, you know, to discourage vehicles moving into the residential areas that where the owners don't live in those areas. And so we listened very carefully to the comments of the public and to the commissioners, and the proposal that we're bringing to you today has a different, completely different take on that. So let's move on to the next one. So I have, I'm offering up three options, and what I should say is, these options, actually, the Public Works Director and I and other folks in our community development area brainstormed and thought deeply about what options there were for the city, and we came up with these, but I should say that we're not advocating for any of these options. We just tried to come up with the most efficient and potentially least cumbersome options for the city to enforce. And so the first option also focuses on the 72-hour limit. It's a limit that comes also out of state statutes. Many cities focus on the 72-hour limit, and it also requires that these large vehicles are, move from the location 1,500 feet, again, using the 1,500 feet. And then we provided certain exceptions to these vehicles where in the daytime, they could park for two hours. So let's say you have a large vehicle and you're driving through the city and you want to have lunch, you can park your vehicle in the city while you have lunch or at night for one hour. And I should mention this, there's an important part of option one that I haven't mentioned yet, which is the permit idea. So the idea is anybody who wanted to park an oversized vehicle in the city, other than for two hours during the day and one hour at night, would need to get a permit from the city, and that would allow them then to park for 72 hours. And the idea behind the permit is it allows the city to know who is parking large vehicles in the city, who they are, how they can be contacted, what their vehicle license plate number is, and where they are expected to be parking so that the city can keep track of that. And it also allows the city to understand when their 72 hours will begin, when their 72 hours will end, so there isn't this question about how long have they been there, et cetera. And the other thing about this option is that the program applies citywide. And so if you have a citywide program, we can do what Redwood City has done, which is install signs only at the entrances to the city. All of the roadways that enter the city would have a sign, and if you sign in that way, then that's, under the law, considered warning to anybody coming into the city so that you don't have to, first of all, wait and then inform them of the problem and tag them, et cetera. Instead, they know right away, they have to comply right away. That would require that we post the signs, but our calculations suggest that we would only need to post 50 signs, which would cost the city around $25,000. So that seems like a doable investment. And it also balances with the flexibility for the residents because the residents could get a permit and easily park within, in the residential area and near their home. And also, what I don't have on this slide is the idea that we had come up with as well was that a resident could get five permits per month, which would allow them to, you know, park in their area for 15 days during a month. So that's option one. Option two is similar, but option two only requires residents to get a permit. It also provides residents with 15 permits per month.
Sorry, did you say only requires residents to get a permit?
If we may hold questions till the completion of staff report, please. Thank you.
It would only, and then, what I mean by that is, you have to have a permit to park a large vehicle for more than two hours in the day within the city. If you're a resident, you can get a permit, and then you can park it for 72 hours. That's what I mean to be saying there, exactly. So what I should say is it allows residents to get a permit. Yeah, thank you. Otherwise, it's basically the same as rule as option one. And then option three is a no-permit option, and it also applies citywide, and it also requires large vehicles to move 1,500 feet from their location every 72 hours. It simplifies enforcement because we have the signage at the entrances, so you don't have to wait the 72 hours before you tag. And the risk of the recurring violations is reduced because you have to move away and stay away for 72 hours, not just 24 hours. 24 hours, so our code enforcement folks say, is just not long enough. It's easy for someone to leave and just stay over one day and then come right back, and then they're still kind of in that same community, but actually having people move away and stay away for 72 hours should really get people moving around. This does give us the risk that vehicles will move into the residential areas because we don't really have a way to keep them from doing so under this mechanism. So fiscal considerations, the signage, this does really kind of focus a lot on the signage at the entrances. Again, I said it would be $25,000, and for the cost of that, this sort of indicates how and why. If we are doing an ordinance that has different regulations for different areas of the city and we want to have the efficiency of signage, then we're going to be having to put four signs per block, and that, we've determined, will cost the city well over $3 million. It really becomes cost prohibitive to work it that way, which is why we've had the idea of having a citywide program versus district program. So for the permit piece, we've calculated that it would cost about, which seems like a lot to me, actually, $46.50 to issue a permit. That's basically the city employee's time, fully loaded. We could, I mean, and at the same time, we're only expecting to have three to four permits a week, so it really isn't that huge of an investment to do the permits in terms of the cost to the city. If it turns out we have to be issuing many more permits than that, then it may require more staff time and might be a little more of an expense for the city. You could also have a program, that you could consider having a program where you ask the person seeking a permit to make a payment, maybe not the full payment, maybe $20 a permit or whatever it might be. So you could potentially collect some of your costs through that process. And just as an aside, in 2024, the city had $180,000 in revenue from parking permits, from, I'm sorry, parking citations. The parking citations, again, were not associated necessarily with these larger vehicles, but that was just the money that was coming in. So parking citations and maybe, you know, permit fees can help cover some of the cost. And then the uniform city rules reduce confusion, and the signage issue is savings. So staff is recommending option one. It provides enforcement tools with flexibility for residents. It reduces legal risk, it's cost-effective, and it aligns with the current enforcement capacity and policy goals. There you have it.
Thank you, Attorney Andrews. Appreciate the detailed and diligent staff report there. Maybe I will ask our commissioners to restrict this time to clarifying questions only, and before we go to clarifying questions, if any members of the public wish to speak later at public comments, you would need to fill a comment card. So if someone is here to make public comments, there are comment cards in the front that you can fill out and give it to the city clerk. So with that, we will open it up for clarifying questions. I see people are going for the mic. Commissioner Sharf.
So can you tell me where the 1,500 feet came from? Because I believe at our last meeting, it was something different that we suggested.
The 1,500 feet came from the idea of asking someone to move, you know, a block away, far enough away so that they weren't kind of in the exact same area.
Rather than you have, you can only be in the whole city for 72 hours. You can't move anywhere in the city. Well, we're not supposed to say any other suggestions right now, but anyway. Yeah, and thank, I did see other cities that have signs at the entrances to the city regarding parking, and if we did that, I would suggest that we include.
Clarifying questions only, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on, let's see.
And if you would like to yield your time, if you don't have clarifying questions.
Oh, how much are the citations per violation?
I think it's like $83.
And is that set by the county or the city or what?
I'm going to actually ask our public works. We don't know exactly who sets that number.
Isn't that the city?
I think, isn't that the city fee schedule that's setting that? Don't know?
Oh.
I'm sorry, I wouldn't know.
Sometimes counties have limits, I mean, you can't just have a citation cost of a thousand dollars, right? I don't, I don't know where that, I just wonder where the eighty-three came from, is it enough for, okay? All right, so all my other things are not questions, so I will wait.
If I, if I may ask a very simple clarifying question, then I'll yield to Commissioner Fong, but, um, who here is representing, well firstly, who would do enforcement? Is it code enforcement or West Valley Patrol? And who among staff would be representing their viewpoint?
So code enforcement is, um, within the community development group, and we have a specific code enforcement group, and I've, um, met a number of times with Monica Diaz, I think it is, um, and she is incredibly knowledgeable, she's not available tonight, unfortunately. But I worked quite a bit with her and learned quite a lot from her.
Okay, so do I take it that Attorney Andrews, you would be speaking on behalf of code enforcement based on your learnings from them?
As best that I can, yes.
Okay, I'm asking because I don't see Director Fu, I believe he is not in the room, I don't see-
He's on vacation this week, unfortunately.
I don't see Agent Director Connolly, so I don't know if he was representing-
Not representing code, unfortunately, tonight.
Just checking. And I do see Director Mosley, I don't know if Director Mosley is, is the rest an expert on all things and therefore, or he enjoys the topic, but plenty of seats in the front if you'd like to come join us. So with that, I will yield to other commissioners if you have questions. Commissioner Fong.
My, my only question, actually it's related, um, to the chair's question, uh, so, so you, you did have discussions with somebody in code enforcement, so they, their input is reflected in the, um, report and the follow-on?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, okay, so, hi.
Hi.
Couple of questions. One is, uh, following up on one of the letters that we received from a member of the public, how is this agendized, um, this topic? Because it's not a city work program item, and it wasn't, uh, on a city council, um, agenda, it wasn't voted on by the city council to direct staff to do this, and per our municipal code, on, you know, if it's over two hours, it needs to be direction from the entire council before staff can work on it. So can you speak to that?
I, I can't speak to that, I must say, I can't speak to that. The direction came to me through, uh, the city council mechanism, I don't think that, I don't know, I don't recall that the city council voted at a public meeting.
Okay, so from your legal perspective, though, can any decision that we make here today be challenged because of this?
Well, I don't think-
Point of clarification, I believe we are not making decision tonight, we are hearing a study session, and we may make a recommendation.
Okay, can our recommendation be challenged?
I don't think so, but maybe I'll let the, um, city attorney representative here tonight speak to that.
So, um, the commission handbook provides for the chair in coordination with the liaison to, to identify an item for the agenda, and I believe that there was discussion regarding having this item to be on the agenda for the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, other questions?
I had one, but go ahead.
Voice chair.
Uh, I have many questions, uh, so I'll start with a few. With option one, uh, with the day and particularly the nighttime parking requirement of no more than one hour, how does that get enforced in the middle of the night if you assume that, you know, code enforcement is not working during those hours?
I do think that the two-hour block and the one-hour-at-night block, um, enforcing it will be challenging, but it is a way of, um, uh, it's, it is, um, sending the message that that is the rule, and, um, and it could be enforced, and, yeah.
Okay. Is the signage all or nothing in the sense that can we isolate and, and pick out signage on uncertain blocks that have a higher count of vehicles? Or does it have to be uniformly across the city?
It doesn't have to be uniformly across the city, you can choose areas that you want to put the signage, um, it's about two thousand dollars a block.
Okay. Then around the cost, the five hundred dollars for a new sign, is that for literally constructing a new sign, or does it also include adding on a sign to an existing pole? I'm wondering if the cost could be lower depending on, you know, what infrastructure already exists.
I understand that it's the creating of the sign, the materials, and the installation. So I suppose if you can just take the sign face and put it on another pole, maybe it would be less expensive, but my sense, I mean, I don't know, our director of public, ah, there we go.
Hello, Commissioner Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. Yeah, if we were to utilize existing infrastructure like a pole, it would be a little less. The five hundred dollars is for complete fabrication of the sign and installation. The sign blanks in themselves are probably around eighty bucks, and then there is some staff labor time to install that on the existing pole, so you'd probably be looking at maybe a hundred and fifty bucks a sign as opposed to five hundred dollars a sign. I'm really roughing that and pulling that out of the air, so don't quote me on that number, but it's close to that.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying, that's helpful, because I think a lot of our city streets already have poles with signs that could possibly be leveraged. My next question, so I did talk with Prince of Peace today, and they actually were a little bit surprised, and they said that they do not do large vehicles in, on their parking lots. They actually specifically spell it out online, actually, that, um, they can't accommodate the larger vehicles. So I was curious if, you know, is this statement in the staff report referring to some network of churches, and maybe there's a different location?
That was based on communications that I had with staff, and based on, um, what I found on the city's website. But I, uh, I don't know if I confirmed whether you could have a large vehicle, or if it could only be a small vehicle.
Okay, yeah, it's very explicitly not allowed on, on their site, so we would probably need to find an alternative. Okay, and then my last question, then I'll turn it over to others. For the option one versus option two, I noticed that there's a commercial vehicle exception that's listed in option two, but not in one. Would that technically also be, would you see that fitting under one as well? Uh, it's just that specifically you say current city regulations would remain effective that allow certain commercial vehicles to park in the public right-of-way for longer periods of time, and that is stated in option two, but it's not stated in option one?
Uh, thank you for pointing that out, no, it would be the same.
Okay.
And, um, we dug more deeply into that, and it's really commercial vehicles that, um, are encroaching on, um, the flow of traffic.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, so a couple more questions, uh, going back to the anti-displacement, uh, curious as to your thoughts, why, uh, so I've seen, you know, I, I was doing some research on this, and some cities, uh, implemented ordinances that ban or restrict oversized vehicles, and they were sued because they did not include any anti-displacement measures. And it seems like if we do the same thing, we are at risk of getting sued, uh, because we are not providing enough anti-displacement measures, and so I'm curious how the decision was made to, to not include that in any of the options that you're proposing. So, okay, I'll, I'll start with that as my first question.
Thank you. I think those cities were implementing those programs before Grants Pass, before the Supreme Court ruling last year, and that had, you know, profound impact on, um, what cities can do in California, um, and other states within the Ninth Circuit, because the Ninth Circuit had had an earlier ruling that said unless there's a bed available for somebody without a home, um, you could not ask them to leave or remove them from public property. And, um, that has now been overturned, that was based on, uh, argument of cruel and unusual punishment on, in the, in the constitution, and the Supreme Court ruled that that is not cruel and unusual punishment. And so you do see, um, the governor, in fact, um, issuing, um, sample ordinances for cities, and, um, the state of California beginning to move on, um, allowing cities to, uh, take a stronger hand with homeless populations. And so my expectation is that, um, it, the city could, of course, be sued, you can be sued for anything, but I think at this time, uh, in this climate, uh, legal climate, uh, the city would likely not be deemed liable.
Got it, thank you. Do we know how many of the current residents who are living in these RVs are Cupertino residents?
That's a good question, and I don't, um, I mean, it depends what you mean by Cupertino, somebody who has a home or an apartment where they're in Cupertino, but they're deciding to live in their RV on the street, I don't know.
Who has roots in Cupertino, of, yeah, I mean, I know that's a difficult question to answer, but I was wondering if you had looked into that at all.
I, I, on that topic, I only have anecdotal conversational evidence from staff members, but I have heard that, um, some people living in the RVs are employed in the city, um, and, yeah, they just can't necessarily afford an apartment or whatever here, so they use their RVs for that.
Got it. My final question for now is, um, when you were looking at creating the, the permit solution, did you think about any differentiation between residents, uh, guests of residents, and visitors passing through?
We did, and, um, so the idea was at, to be residents that could get the permit, so a resident could get the permit for their friend, um, who was, you know, visiting them. If it's, if it's, uh, if anybody can get a permit, then everybody could get a permit. But if you go with the scenario where residents are the only oversized vehicle owners that can park their vehicles on city streets for more than seventy-two hours, um, or for seventy-two hours at all, um, then we were thinking about people who actually live here.
Okay, what I would like to do is open it up for public comments, and then we will continue questions. That gives the public a chance to provide their input, that gives commissioners a chance to hear the public's input, and then we can continue questions. So if, uh, Madam City Clerk, if we can take public comments at this time?
We have four speaker cards in person and no hands raised on Zoom. Our first speaker is Brooke Fizzitt, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Gopal, welcome Brooke.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate the presentation, it clarified a lot of things. First of all, it seems like regardless of how this is done, the sticking point is going to be code enforcement, since they only work five days a week. Is that, is any of that going to be shifted over to the sheriff's department? Do they have the option of doing that? Secondly, um, considering that it was mentioned in the presentation that the citations are mostly paid, which is unusual, um, I'm assuming people are actually living there, and I'd like to know how the wastewater is being handled, where is, where is it being dumped? Do we have a dump station in Cupertino? Is that feasible, and if so, would people be charged for it? Fine, and I guess another point I want to, thing I want to point out, is the commuter buses in Cupertino, those are really a problem. We have a pair of them that seem to situate themselves at the corner of, I think it's Banley and Stevens Creek, right by, uh, Chase and whatever. And if you're coming out of the Marina Foods parking lot, you can't see when you're turning left, you can't see when you're turning right. If you want to go across the street to Target, uh, you risk being clocked, and I think that's pretty dangerous, and I would like to see, uh, these companies with their commuter buses parking their buses on the company property and leaving the streets to the residents and to, um, other, other people. And finally, um, in terms of whether or not somebody's a resident of Cupertino, if they're living in an RV, you can declare an intersection as your home for the purpose of voting rights, so I would assume that they'd be residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Up next, we have Jean Bedford, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Gopal, followed by Dave McLeroy on Zoom. Welcome, Jean.
Hello, good evening, my name is Jean Bedord, rather than Bedford. And, uh, I welcome the opportunity to speak here. I am here to oppose all of the options in the staff report. First of all, it has to do with the city work plan, but second of all, um, these are all punitive permit, I particularly oppose a, uh, punitive permit system that would be cumbersome and expensive to implement. Permits would cost approximately fifty dollars each, and so you are requiring both residents as well as our unhoused, uh, population to be paying fifty dollars every seventy-two hours. That doesn't sit well. In addition, I don't want to spend money on signage that says you're not welcome in our city, because these are people who spend money, they work in our city, many of them. It's interesting that none of you have actually talked with the residents who are living in these oversized vehicles and asked, what is it that you would need to be able to move out of your RV and into affordable housing, or whatever the different options are? Another problem with the permit system is that you need to operate twenty-four by seven. You know, city halls only open Monday, Monday through Friday, eight to five, so what if somebody comes in on a weekend? How are they going to get a permit? I think you need to think through a lot of the logistical, uh, impediments to this type of system. Now, we already know there's a staff shortage, so it's going to be very difficult to offer that sort of coverage. But the bigger problem is you're not addressing the ongoing challenge that we have with unsheltered residents. You want to implement a punitive system that impacts both residents and the unsheltered. How many individual vehicles are we talking about? I'm guessing it's on the order of fifteen to twenty individual, rather than two hundred citations, because I think that they're, the same vehicle is being targeted multiple times. So, why aren't you looking at the broader context of looking at what options are available for people with tents, with RVs and trailers, or, or, I'm sorry, cars and vans, and, um, then RVs? They're all three different populations by and large. The city needs to be, um, more proactive in addressing this.
Thank you, that is your time. Up next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Gopal, followed by Dave McLeroy, welcome Peggy.
Good evening, can I use the overhead? Please. Ah, okay. I'm not going to get here yet. I'm completely opposed to the permit process, it is onerous. I own an RV, my husband and I, and we put it on the street when we're having our trees trimmed, we put it on the street when a neighbor comes and says, you have to move it, we're having workers, and we don't want to damage your RV. It's instant. Every time these situations come up, I don't want to have to run to the city and get a permit, it doesn't make sense, the city also, they have work to do. And if I name my permit right now to be legal, can you do it right now? Right now, we have, I, I live in an, uh, area where we have permit parking, but if I have friends over, it takes several days to get a permit waiver for that. Permits don't work. As, uh, Brooke said, the homeless can specify their address, so if you implement something like that, they can become an, an, a, a resident of Cupertino by specifying Banley and Alvez. Do you want to know where these RVs are, or where they're from? Run their plates. Also, I'm, I'm happy you're looking at this, it really needs to be addressed. You need to update the definitions, I agree that after seventy-two hours, you move but fifteen hundred, just one block away, we had that situation in our neighborhood, and it bounced back and forth one block, um, for at least seventy-two hours. And then what do you do? You give them a citation, after that, what? It needs to be thought out. No permits, you're punishing the residents, and you're adding overhead, more staff work, and it's not solving the solution. Only implement laws you plan to enforce. Right now, we have, these are the definitions, um, and they aren't very clear, and I'm an RV owner. When I looked at the laws, I didn't know that right now, it is against the law to, no vehicle shall be used for living- that right now, it is against the law to, no vehicle shall be used for living or sleeping quarters on any public street. That's a law right now, and we don't, we don't enforce it. Mobile homes, mobile homes excluding travel trailers are not permitted to be parked on public streets within the residential zones. So I was in violation when I moved my RV to the street so my trees could be trimmed. My neighbor was in violation when she preps her RV and towed the car to go out the next morning. We're not even enforcing what we have, and we-
Thank you. That is your time.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Gopal, followed by Dave McLeRoy. Welcome, Gopal.
Good evening. This is my first time here, so mine is more of a clarifying questions. Uh, I kind of missed the first part of the presentation. Within, um, uh, with Cupertino, right now, they are approving up to three ADUs one can build on their main property. Okay? Now the, now the question is, what, what is going to be the parking facilities for those ADUs? Is it the, mm, the owner's responsibility to go and get the permit? Or, like, say, we are going to rent it out? The tenant's responsibility, every tenant who comes in, who needs to apply for their permit? So that's the area I'm not clear, like, how does it's going to work, uh, with the new ADUs coming up, and how are they going to park?
So specifically, is your question about oversized vehicle parking?
Not oversized, second of all. For a regular-
So as, as a point of clarification, you can only make public comments on the item on agenda right now?
Sorry, I, I missed, okay, got it.
So you're allowed to talk about oversized vehicle parking if you'd like to make any comments?
No, no, not about the oversized vehicle parking.
Thank you, Gopal.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Dave McLeRoy on Zoom. Welcome, Dave.
Uh, thanks for the meeting. I can see you put a lot of time into this. Uh, I would just like to make a few points. Again, my name is Dave McLeRoy. Uh, I've been using RVs since I was a young man, and, uh, the last one I got was quite large because we had extended family and kids, and we just couldn't pack everyone in my twenty-five footer that I had before that one. So a lot of people that take kids and family out camping, uh, they need bigger than twenty-two feet. That, that's maybe a two-person size. Um, and I want to remind you, and it was brought up at the last, uh, council meeting, that Old Bonavista, when we were annexed, we were told, told anything that was legal in the county at the time would remain legal after that. I would like to add that seventy-two hours was the limit, so that's, limit still applies to those of us in Old Bonavista. Uh, you can't regulate anything else that, that we did before in terms of parking on the street. I think you should do a permit, uh, for residents, just so when the car is parked out there, you can see that it's a resident parking. Um, the, most of the RVs over behind Target are pretty nice RVs because they're Apple employees, and Apple should provide parking for those RVs, for those employees who stay there usually four days a week. They have three-day weekends. Uh, they're in there because they find a cluster, uh, but I think Apple has some responsibility here. So this is really a tangled mess. I don't envy you trying to come up with a solution, but I support you because, uh, everywhere where I trap comments, the people are suffering, uh, that live in those areas, and I read the comments uh, that they make on Nextdoor. So thanks again for the great effort, and I do support what you're doing because we have to have some control over people just willy-nilly parking these things all over. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
We have no speaker cards in person and no hands raised on Zoom chair.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, I will close public comments on this item and bring it back to the Commission for more clarifying questions. I did want to make a clarifying question to kick this off. I don't believe, and Attorney Andrews, if you can correct me, I don't believe residents would need to apply for a permit if they're parking in the driveway. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I believe there is a exception for three hours of daytime parking and one hour of nighttime parking for residents, and so if they're parking in other parts of the city beyond their driveway, they have three hours during the day and one hour during the night during which no permit is required. Is that correct?
Um, under option one, we said two hours during the day and one hour at night, but, um, all of these, um, options are just suggestions, so it could be more, but that's true.
So, so for some period during the day and during the night-
Correct.
-no parking permit were required, and that is actually more explicit than what is in the Mooney Code right now, as the resident pointed out? Because the Mooney Code does, uh, restrict parking on public streets for mobile homes, and so this would make it more explicit? Is that, is that a fair interpretation? So to the, to the extent that you have a certain allowed time limit of grace during daytime and nighttime, and that is explicitly stated, that would be actually more inclusive than the current Mooney Code for mobile homes that prohibits parking on public roadways? Is that correct? Can you just- Sorry, I have not finished my question.
Okay. But just mobile homes versus RVs, they're not the same thing? I just want to point that out.
Understood, but at least for mobile homes, this law would be more explicit.
It would be more explicit, and, um, currently, you can park for seventy-two hours in a commercial street. Um, and I, you know, now I'm just, actually, forgive me, I'm drawing a blank. Is it true that you cannot park an RV on a public street in a residential zone right now at all?
That was mobile homes only, I believe, at least what the Mooney Code showed. So I want to go back to the public comments we heard and remind the public that residents do not need to apply for a permit if you're parking within your property, and residents do not need to apply for a permit if you are in other parts of the city for a period of time, as defined by whatever we recommend. Now, my next question was, sorry, it's definitely-
If I may make a clarifying comment, I was just looking it up. Mobile homes are not permitted to be parked on any property. Mobile homes do differ from RVs.
Correct, yes, understood. A, and as another point of clarification, the, the off-hours enforcement is by the deputies today, I believe. So any kind of code enforcement off-hours, if you call in the non-emergency line for West Valley Patrol, they will take a code enforcement call. So I just want to make that clarification. So I believe there were some comments about how this would be enforced, and if it is off-hours, uh, residents can bring this to the notice of West Valley Patrol. The, uh, the other questions that came up, I believe there was a question on how you would get a permit if this were on the weekend? I assume that residents that have guests coming over could do this in advance of the weekend, so they have the permit for any guest that may be arriving on the weekend?
We were also considering the idea of having an online ability, where you just fill out the form, you're a resident, and you can get a permit on the weekend.
A, and then, I, I know I asked this in advance of the meeting, are there ways to avoid the permit by having code enforcement work with West Valley Patrol to have a registration check on the license plates?
So, um, we did spend a bit of time looking into that, and, um, e- even for the sheriff's office, they really only, um, run that tag search if they're in the middle of an enforcement action. And so although our code, the city's code enforcement people don't have access to that mechanism, they can call the sheriff and ask them to do it, but only if they're in the middle of an enforcement action. And a lot of these, uh, the current work is before there's any enforcement, deciding how long the vehicle's been there, um, tagging the vehicle isn't even enforcement, it's only after, um, it, there's a clear violation, that's when you're in enforcement mode. And so having that mechanism, um, in terms of, let's say, driving down a residential street and noticing that there's, um, a motorhome or an oversized vehicle parked there, uh, the code enforcement would not be able to look up to figure out if that vehicle is owned by a resident.
U- understood, but if there were a complaint, and assuming this were complaint-based, if there were a complaint and code enforcement went out to the site to respond to that complaint, would that be considered an enforcement action?
I don't think it would. Right now, that's kind of what they're doing anyway. Um, somebody calls and says, oh, this RV has been parked behind Target for a really long time, you should go and look at it, and then code enforcement goes and sees, oh, yeah, there it is. Now, um, we need to let them know that they can only be here for seventy-two hours, and that's not enforcement, or we tag them, that's not enforcement. It's only after we know that there's been a violation, then we can figure out, if we want to, where they live, um, and that would be, because that's when enforcement is taking place. Um, and the other thing that I did hear from the sheriff is a decent percentage of people don't update their address with the DMV, and so the registration on the vehicle oftentimes doesn't actually, isn't accurate in terms of their, uh, residential location.
But that would be another reason for them to update their address, I would assume, not a reason for leniency on the part of the city. I, I think it's fair to assume if, if they are a resident but have not updated their address, this would be motivation to do that.
Oh, yeah. Nice.
Uh, I will yield to my fellow commissioners if anyone has other questions? No other questions? Okay, please. Vice Chair.
Okay. So, um, in theory, could we have permitting for longer periods? Like, rather than a, one, one-off instances, could you have a five-year permit, for example, which would then save staff overhead, um, save the residents' time?
Yeah, we were just talking about that before this meeting, and, um, I do think you could organize it so that, let's say, a resident could get an annual permit. We would have to think through the, uh, impact of that, but based upon our earlier conversation, it seemed that that would be a possibility.
Okay. Uh, is there a reason why we wouldn't consider just a registration online versus permitting? Like, have ever, anyone with an RV that wants to register, register, and then, you know, if code, code enforcement is somehow called out, then they just check against registration?
To make sure that that, it's owned by a regis-, uh, a resident. I, I think that would work, I do. We would need to have a mechanism to make sure that the person hasn't moved away.
Right.
In other words, the doc, the database would have to be kept up to date.
Okay. Um, my next question was around biowaste. How is it currently being tracked and handled? Uh, I'm, just as context to this question, so City of San Jose, I know that they do track pretty closely the sewer systems and water quality, but we may not have those resources, so.
Just briefly, I'm, we're not tracking, but we are verifying that it's not being dumped into the adjacent storm drain systems. We have verified that on numerous occasions, uh, they do remain clean at this point in time.
Excellent, thank you. Um, and then I wanted to just finally clarify, so the current ordinance says actually that, uh, no person who owns any vehicle shall park anywhere for more than seventy-two hours. So, um, that, the, the current ordinance actually includes smaller vehicles as well. So is the enforcement currently for regular-sized vehicles any different, or do regular-sized vehicles also get towed on occasion?
Uh, they do, uh, uh, get towed on occasion. Actually, the RVs aren't really being towed because it's incredibly expensive and it's hard to find a tow company that will do that, but yes, it's my understanding that if a vehicle, um, is, um, you know, not in a good working order, um, it could be towed. Yeah, vehicles that have been there longer than seventy-two hours are being towed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, oh.
Commissioner, Sheriff? We're still, we're still doing questions before we, okay. So I did have a few more questions. Can you comment on the public comment that was made that somebody could declare, uh, an intersection as a residence, and therefore, everybody that is parked as an RV long-term could just declare themselves as residents?
Uh, that, I have never heard of that. I'm not, I don't know if it's true or not. It might very well be true, uh, but I can't really comment on it, I haven't looked into it.
Okay. And, and the purpose of this distinction is fundamentally to, to provide more leeway for a residence versus these RV campers that are in the city long-term? Is that, is that a fair interpretation, that we are trying to find ways to distinguish how we would treat resident policy versus otherwise?
Correct.
Are there other ways you would define a resident besides the registration on record? That, that would give you a more permanent definition besides declaring an intersection?
I would think that, um, the address on record wouldn't actually be the resident, I think it, residence. It would be, where do you live? Do you live in Cupertino? What's your address? Um, and if somebody is saying their address is this intersection, um, I, I honestly would have to go back to the books and see if that's, uh, would be considered an actual address or a residential location.
A, and is it reasonable to expect proof of residency through utility bills and other such means that would be required to verify and double verify residency such that utility bills would not be delivered to an intersection?
Well, I think you would look at driver's license and, yeah, utility bills to verify, uh, if the city felt that that kind of verification was necessary.
Okay. So I just want to clarify at this point, I think the clarifying questions have established that residents do not need to apply for a permit if parking on their property, and do not need to apply for a permit for a duration of time during the day and during the evenings. That would be up to staff, and that'd be up to the Commission to, uh, make a motion and, and, and vote on. And, and then for any weekend visitors, they can apply for permits ahead of time. So this really comes down to potentially an inconvenience if you have out-of-town visitors that would need a parking permit. Is that, is that fair?
I think that that's fair. But all of the specifics really are, um, up to the Commission to-
Yep.
-work through.
And, and is there a reason that staff recommended option one versus option two?
It seemed the most straightforward to implement, and and it seemed reasonable that even non-residents could get a permit for seventy-two hours in the city.
So, so how is this different than status quo right now? Because all we're saying is instead of moving two inches, they, they got to move fifteen-hundred feet, and they got to stay moved for seventy-two hours instead of twenty-four hours. Is that the only difference?
Uh, they have to stay away for seventy-two hours instead of twenty-four, yes. Um, well, and they have to register, and the registration piece is important because it tells the city, um, who is in the city and where the vehicle is, and how long it's expected to be there, so the city can track the vehicles that are, uh, parking, and, you know, people who are, uh, living for three days and their vehicle in the city.
Okay.
And also in addition, I think there's a limitation as to the number of permits, they're entitled to per month.
Okay, but if I count these five permits for seventy-two hours, that's fifteen days, and then if the weekends are a grace period, they've pretty much gotten to twenty-five days at least, somewhere thereabouts. So in the twenty-three to twenty-five days in a month, they've got the ability to, of course, they're paying a price for it, so. All right, I, I did have some more clarifying questions. So what is the definition of these oversized vehicles? For example, city vehicles and school district vehicles, would those come under the purview of this, or how would we treat city and public works vehicles in the fleet, for example, or school district equivalent fleet vehicles? How would those be treated?
I think, personally, I would think that they would be carved out, but I'll let the Public Works Director.
Yeah, I believe they're already carved out. Uh, city vehicles are already exempt.
And the school district as well?
I'm not sure about the school district. I'd have to look at that, but, um-
Okay. But we'd have to maybe take a look at other agencies that operate in the city that have a need for parking that may be beyond that property, so school district, for example.
Uh, sorry, point of clarification, so in eleven dot thirty-two dot oh-eight-oh, it says that except, uh, this does not apply to passenger buses under the jurisdiction of, of public utilities and school buses, so I believe they're already exempted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. A, and then same question for any offices that may have vehicles such as, you know, Apple, for example. Uh, does this ordinance assume that those would be treated as oversized vehicles, or if the registration shows an address in Cupertino, is that treated as a resident?
I think that would be sort of one of those wrinkles that we would have to work through.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions from other commissioners?
Yeah, I had one question. You know, I saw City of San Jose recently is passing a ban against what they call van lords. Uh, people that essentially set up an apartment building by buying a bunch of RVs and renting them out. Do we know in Cupertino, how many of the RV residents are renting RVs? And how many are living in RVs that they own? Or do we have no idea?
Good question. I don't know of that and I did speak, um, you know, extensively with our code enforcement group and I did not hear that that's happening, but they do know that it's aware in San, they're aware of the San Jose situation and there is some worry that that might migrate into Cupertino.
Right, okay, and I guess this is a clarifying question. We already have an ordinance that's not being enforced. Why is that on living in your vehicle?
Um, well, so where you don't have signage up would be one thing. So you would have to, the city would have to go and warn that you can't sleep in your vehicle here. Um, and it's probably difficult. Uh, you would have to knock on the door and really have an interaction with these people to understand and be able to, you know, support the allegation that they're sleeping or living in their vehicle. So my expectation is that code enforcement hasn't um, gone to that length.
Yeah, I, I'm asking that because just this morning, a resident was complaining about a van which would not be covered by this ordinance with some threatening people sleeping in it on his street. And I said, oh, you know, he said, other cities have signage that you can't do that, but, you know, at the entrance to the city, but we don't. So that's the reason why we can't enforce it, because we don't have the proper signage?
If you had the signage like we were talking about, um, then uh, you wouldn't have to warn the individual. There would be constructive, the sign gives them constructive notice. So if they're violating the rules that are described on the sign, then you can um, um, hold them responsible for that violation right then.
Okay.
So, so just adding to that question, I'm trying to understand, we have a vast Muni Code and code enforcement today takes complaint calls on violations of the Muni Code. Are we saying we need signage for taking these calls or I'm not, I'm not sure, I understand why we need the signage at all? For example, there's any number of Muni Code issues that today are being handled by code enforcement without needing signage. So why do we need the signage?
Uh, it's in the vehicle, the state vehicle code. So it's specifically focusing on vehicles, the signage issue. Um, and so if you have a, um, a code violation at your home, then that's gonna have a sort of different enforcement structure versus, um, you know, vehicles and city streets and signs.
Director Mosley, go ahead.
If, if I may, um, I did have a quick conversation with code enforcement, asking them, don't we already have a Muni Code section that says people can't sleep in their vehicles? And they said, yes, we do, but uh, it is difficult for staff to get the burden of proof to show that they are living in there. You knock on the door, what are you doing here? Hanging out in my vehicle. People are allowed to hang out in their vehicles. So to get that burden of proof that somebody is sleeping there is difficult and that's one of the reasons we've been having a hard time um, enforcing that. And keep in mind, prior grants pass, it was, we, we couldn't cite people for doing that. It was illegal for us to, to criminalize people sleeping in their cars.
Thank you, Director Mosley. And while you're at the podium, could you comment on the need for signage? Do you have a opinion on whether signage is?
I, I know to a certain extent with respect to any kind of parking violation, uh, you need to have signage for the, the sheriff to be able to enforce it. I don't know why that differs from other code violations, but, but the signage is required for it to be enforced by the sheriff's office.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, another question, are there considerations given for construction oversized vehicles that may be working at a site in the city that need to be parked for the duration of the day while work is on progress?
I think that they could get a permit. You mean under the proposals or in today's world?
I'm, I'm wondering if the staff report has given consideration and thought to that.
I, I think the idea is that you would, if you have an oversized vehicle and you're gonna park on a city street for more than those windows, then you would get a permit.
Okay, so that seems concerning in, in that, you know, we're trying to solve a problem, but residents going through a home remodel or a home construction shouldn't be penalized with needing to take these permits, especially if it's only a limited, but, but we can talk about it in discussion. Any other last questions? Otherwise, we can transition to discussion at this time. So we're moving on to discussion and uh, if anybody wants to kick it off, I will, I will just maybe briefly add that we've gotten a number of written comments. I know we had a few speakers during public comment, but we also got a number of written comments and, and I will, uh, wanna appreciate the role of our staff in economic development that I believe did a fair amount of reach, outreach to businesses in that impacted area. So wanna appreciate the effort of Daniel Digu in this, uh, in this matter. Also wanna appreciate our business stakeholders that did take the time to send us input and the Chamber of Commerce that sent us input as well. I think we're obviously dealing with many stakeholders here. We have residents that have RVs. We have residents that have guests that visit with RVs. And then we have this parking problem around certain locations. But we also have business owners and their customers that have an experience that we need to keep in mind. And we're also developing many parts of the city in that area. The Marina Plaza is being redeveloped, the Panera site is being redeveloped, on Bandly, there's another project from Summer Hill. So the entire area is gentrifying and being redeveloped. And I believe our applicants uh, would like the city to keep in mind their experience, so. I just wanna kick it off with those comments and then anyone else wanna?
Yeah, I have a few comments. Okay, so, so I went through uh, uh, some of the, the concerns and objections that um, people have raised. And I think one of them is it shouldn't, whatever solution we come up with today should not be punitive to our current residents and should not be onerous to our current residents either, right? So um, we really shouldn't be creating any extra work for our current residents. They don't deserve it and it, it impacts their quality of life. So, so I think whatever solution we come up with has to keep that in mind.
Were you using punitive and onerous interchangeably or?
No, this, it's sliding scales of, of pain. So uh, onerous would be kind of annoying, punitive would be actually more painful. Um, so neither should be, so like if you're, yeah, it, it basically, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be making this even inconvenient for residents, forget about difficult. Is that?
Would you consider getting a permit as punitive or onerous?
Can I finish my comment?
Sure. Please.
Thank you. And um, and then same thing with code enforcement. Right now, it seems like there's difficulties with how we do the code enforcement because of, you know, the complications of proving whether they can, um, the, the, the people are living there. But I think also there's staffing issues, there's the weekends, um, so, so there's, there's a number of i- issues around code enforcement. Making it onerous for residents having guests, I think is something else we need to solve for. Um, obtaining a permit after hours or, you know, on weekends or, you know, on short notice if you have to, you know, move your, move your vehicle off your driveway or off your, the side of your home for, into the street for whatever reason. And then I, I feel like this hasn't been talked about enough, but really displacing our residents who live in these mobile homes and live and spend um, money and have, potentially have roots in the community. Displacing them without any kind of um, funding for anti-displacement support measures, um, you know, clearly the, the, the safe parking program that was talked about doesn't support RVs. So there's really nothing in the city right now that I've heard of that supports these people if we, if we put in a, a blanket permit process. So I would really like whatever solution we come up with to include some sort of anti-displacement support. Or, or, or commitment that we're going to do something to, to, uh, to mitigate the, the issues for these residents. Um, so, so given that, um, my thoughts are, are three folds. One is, um, we should seriously consider an annual resident permit, a free annual resident permit. That would be a hangtag that residents can just get and put on their, on their vehicle. And that would be given based on a utility bill or something similar to a physical address, not an intersection or a PO box. And it would be one per household, so that we can't do van-lording, um, you know. So one, one resident can't have fifteen RVs and they have to reapply for it annually and it's free. Um, and so it's, it's minimizing the, the concern. But the seventy-two hours at a time limit still holds, right? So they can only be there for seventy-two hours at a time, but they can do that anytime during the year. Um, and, and so I feel like that, that minimizes the, the concern for residents. Um, for guest permits, I think similar, there should be temporary guest permits that residents can apply for, for their guests. If the residents are applying for it, again, it limits who can apply for these and who can't. That, I think we can have a permit fee. Again, it should be a hangtag. It, a hangtag makes it easier for code enforcement also, so they don't have to refer to databases, they don't have to worry about after-hours. They can just look at the hangtag and then police can enforce it also, because if, if no hangtag, then, you know, they don't have to wait seventy-two hours until code enforcement is back in the office. And we can limit the number of guest permits that are available to any home to like, you know, three, four, five, whatever a reasonable number can, uh, can be. And each resident can only have one guest at a time. I think that, that feels reasonable. Um, and then there should be a temporary visitor permit. Like we haven't talked about that much at all, but if, if, you know, if somebody's driving through Cupertino and they just wanna stop for a couple of days to explore Apple Town, to kinda see what our city has to offer. Granted, there's not much, but still, you never know, somebody might want to stop here and, and explore. There should be a way to buy a temporary permit, like for seventy-two hours online um, and print it out and display it on your, on your windshield. Um, and we can limit based on the, the license plate, the number of permits to maybe like, you know, that particular vehicle can only get two permits per year or something like that, so coming and going. But they have to display the permit. I think that's, that's the three-tier system I would propose. And then, like I said, I would really like us to earmark some funding to provide anti-displacement support. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Lintzko. I just wanted to uh, respond to a few of those comments. I believe like it was mentioned previously, there is not an issue about code enforcement during off-hours because West Valley Patrol has the charter for code enforcement during off-hours. So any resident that wishes to make a complaint can call West Valley Patrol during non-business hours and they will get service from West Valley Patrol for code enforcement, so.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
So my understanding on that was that they don't have, they don't share a database. So they can't, they can't cross-reference whether that, you know, there's a permit or not, unless there's a hangtag. So that's what I was trying to solve with the physical hangtag, because the police and the code enforcement have different databases. They don't talk to each other.
Yeah, no, I was just commenting on the fact that there have been multiple comments made. I think some of them by public and some during this discussion about what happens during off-hours. And I think we should just make it clear that twenty-four by seven, there is a mechanism the city offers for anyone to make a code complaint. That may be through three-one-one or that may be to West Valley Patrol. But you can call West Valley Patrol off-hours and make a complaint if you have a code issue. I just wanted to clarify that. I believe the other question was around the displacement policies and I believe it was clarified earlier that there is no requirement for displacement policies following the Supreme Court ruling on grants pass, is that correct? And at the same time, can staff comment on whether there are any safe parking sites from the county that are a resource for the city?
Um, maybe I'll see if the Public Works Director knows.
It's not a simple Google search I did today. There is one in Mountain View and there's one in San Jose that both accommodate uh, RVs.
Thank you, Director Mosley. And then the comment around.
Sorry, sorry, can I just respond to the displacement thing? Yeah, I'm sure that there are, you know, if you go far enough, Mountain View or wherever there are RV parks. But like, my comment is these are residents, some of them, not all of them, but some of them are Cupertino residents and they deserve our compassion and our support. And I feel like that should be a consideration versus saying, you know, sorry, too bad, move out of our city, go somewhere else.
And, and as a point of clarification, do we actually know there are people living in this and what the circumstances are? Because are we assuming that there are people in here or is it, how do we know there's actually people living in it?
You mean in the vehicle?
Yeah.
I think that it's, um, you know, based on circumstantial evidence of seeing people go in and out and the vehicle staying where it is, I.
Okay. All right, any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Fong, you've been silent.
Yeah. I can't believe we've been talking about this this long. I'm not sure that I really believe that this warrants the discussion that we've been having. So first of all, I, I thank you. We had a number of comments about a lack of, um, you know, uh, statistical information to support the actions and, and I feel that you did a good job trying to collect what you could. That said, I think it's very difficult. I don't think that there's a, the presentation has a good measure of what the problem is, how much it would cost, you know. In particular, I had sent some questions in regarding, is this an issue of somebody complaining repeatedly about, about, you know, is, you know, is, is it a particular vehicle that's drawing many of the complaints? A particular person who's making many of the complaints? I think that at a minimum, I would say that I, I understand why that information is not collected today. Uh, but I don't think you can make any kind of decision, you know, if we're, if we're talking about five, you know, uh, five violations or, you know, forty violations, because I think that's what we're, we're, what we're really talking about here. Um, then I think that, that I would say, uh, you wouldn't wanna take an action like this without updating the way you collect the information because it's, you know, if you have no measure of, of what really the problem is, you're almost guaranteed you can't solve, solve the, solve the problem. There was a, uh, I had raised a comment as well about the, there was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar figure for all parking citations. Um, I did raise, I did raise a question and that was answered, um, in the response, again, thank you for that. Uh, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand is the cost of all parking citations of all kind of the city. Not applicable to this, um, to this particular case and the actual number was something like eighteen hundred, um, in the, in the, you know, in the period that was reported. So I would just recommend that, uh, that be updated. So I, I, I'm concerned because I think it's very difficult for this to be, for this to be, you know, uh, it's difficult to measure when, when are you successful? And it's difficult to measure the cost of that, right? Because at some point, um, although it's, it's true, you can call, uh, on off-hours, you can call the sheriff's office because you believe there's a violation. The chances of them actually doing it, and, and I would, I totally support the sheriff's office on this. If it's because somebody's been parked, you know, seventy-three hours, I don't think they're gonna respond to that and I don't think that there's gonna be a, an action on that. So, you, you know, this is a common, common issue with many issues, uh, with code enforcement issues, you know, it's difficult. You know, off-leash dogs, whatever, you know, it's very difficult to do off-hour, um, off-hour reporting. And, and I think that this just becomes a case of, you know, that the problem needs to justify that kind of support. You know, if you really want it. I, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure, I don't think that the, the code enforcement response, although it may seem kind of frustrating. Uh, you know, if, if, if I own the hotel, I would be frustrated that there was not a more effective, um, response. But, you know, I don't think, I don't think the code, code enforcement response is out of line with, you know, the level of the problem. So, you know, again, I, I think a lot of this is really understanding what are the ways that can, can make this suspe- uh, um, successful. I would also, I'm, I was not, although I understand the, the thinking behind the permits and I think that, again, there was a lot of thinking, a lot of thought and work behind the scenes that was demonstrated in this updated report. And I understand, I understand the rationale for, for permits, but I would, I agree with Commissioner Lintzko. I think that there's a problem here and, you know, when you start to talk about, i- if the permit were, for instance, were just to be cost recovery and it costs forty-five or fifty dollars, uh, you know, that's hundreds of dollars a year to the, to residents who, who own RVs and, you know, when Peggy moves her, her RV out in front of the house for a day so she can get trees trimmed. I don't think anybody's gonna complain. I don't really think there's gonna be a problem there, so. So I, I don't want it to get into a situation where, um, you know, where part of the solution is costly, you know, it's costly for residents, costly for people who are parking, somewhat impractical. Again, just not a good use of money. A lot of the cost of the permit is actually, you know, the paperwork and everything that we're doing to, to have the permit. So, uh, you know, let's try to do something that, that would work better. I don't know whether this is realistic or not. I do think there, there's a problem, and the chamber had a number of, um, of their members write in that there was a concern about, you know, businesses in that area are concerned about, you know, the appearance and, and the look of, of the area. And I, I wonder, you know, one of the challenges here, and, and again, I, again, I would, um, salute the, the folks who worked on this report, that trying to have uniform rules that apply across the city, you know, are the best way to try to, to do this fairly, you know, fairly and legally. But if there are specific areas that have a problem, I wonder if there's a way, that, a way to look at, uh, a different kind of solution that would fix that problem. And I don't know whether there's something like, you know, we have parking permit zones, whether that is a solution for the businesses that are on, um, on, on Alves, for instance, you know, whether that is something that, that they could look at. And, and then it really becomes, you know, exactly the same criteria that we use in residential districts. You know, uh, people feel there's an issue here. Try to, try to determine what, what is acceptable, what is unacceptable, and then, and then, you know, work out a, work out a mechanism to do that. The cost then does fall to the people who are asking for the permit zone. But, you know, I, I, I wonder whether there's a solution, a solution like that. Now, that does have the problem, if you push the people out from this spot, maybe they'll just go somewhere else. And you don't want to, you know, create this, create this problem where now I need to create a parking, a permit parking zone everywhere this problem keep pop, you know, pops up. But, you know, I, I would again say, you know, we're, we're not able to do these things in a really, really quantitative way. You know, I understand these problems in quantitative way as we're doing it today. So I would, I would say, you know, there, there must be some reason why, why, um, people have chosen that area to park. You know, whether it's proximity to Apple, maybe its target doesn't care. I, I have no idea. But, you know, you may find that if, if that area is dispersed, that, you know, that they don't reconvene somewhere. And I have no idea, again, I have no idea. So, so I would just say, you know, I, I think maybe the final part of this was that a little of my frustration was that there was not better, um, quantitative tracking of the size of the problem, and, you know, are there repeats and things like that? I think that, um, you know, one of the, one of the things that, you know, that was spoken, spoken about in, um, on the, the positives of having a permit program is, gives you an opportunity to kind of track where people and where they're going. And I, I suspect that probably, you know, would be one of those things where it's just not worth doing when, when you actually start doing it. So I, I would, I would just say, let's try to focus on, really focus on, you know, maybe on more of a qualitative basis. Try to focus on, you know, what is exactly the problem we want to try to solve? And try to figure out the ways we can measure that so that we can, we can be, have a better chance of being successful. Um, as it stands, um, as it stands, I, I wouldn't support any of the options. I, again, I understand the good arguments people have made, but I think that it makes sense to, you know, if this is really something that's worth pursuing, then we probably need to change the way we collect data a little and then come back again in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Fong. Any other Commissioners wish to make comments? Commissioner Shaw?
Okay, great, thank you. So first of all, I want to point out that this actually is a very big issue already for residents and businesses. I really don't think we can keep ignoring this any longer. Other cities are taking action, and we don't want, you know, the people from San Jose saying, oh, look, Cupertino, they're not doing anything, let's just move all our RVs over there. I went down to Alves and Bandle yesterday to look at the problem. Some of the RVs have expired tags, there's garbage on the street, and it's really unclear where they're emptying their holding tanks. But that, if they're not moving their RVs, where are they going, um, to dump their sewage? And if you look at cities, I go to San Francisco often along, uh, Brotherhood Way and Lake Merced Boulevard. As soon as San Francisco started doing enforcement in that area, the RVs just moved over to the next street. So we really do know what happens if you only say, oh, look, we can, we're only going to enforce here because here's where the problem is. Of course, they're going to move to other areas. We already heard the city attorney mention, you know, the musical RVs that they do, moving, everyone moves forward fifteen feet, and then the one at the end moves, moves to the end of the line. So, you know, they're clever, and a, you know, a lot of these, uh, people, you know, have jobs, but it's, you know, it's great. You can create an apartment building on a public street and pay no property taxes. And I don't know if the, these are rentals or ownership, but I'm sure it's a lot less expensive for renting an apartment, even if you can afford one. It's, it's affecting not only businesses. If you try to ride a bike along these streets, they're, you know, the vehicles make it very difficult and very dangerous. And as, um, one resident mentioned, uh, when you exit a parking lot, like the backside of a Target or Marina Market, you can't see vehicles coming because these tall vehicles are blocking the view down the street. And I, about our sheriffs, you know, I was once called the vigilante by, uh, someone because I would call to complain about people parked in the bike lane, um, in various parts. And I have to tell you, our sheriff's deputies, I think we're fortunate in Cupertino, our serious crime rate is pretty low. The deputies always come out and take care of the problem. We're really fortunate, because in a lot of cities, unless it's some serious crime, they'll tell you, oh, just go online and file something. But in Cupertino, our sheriffs do respond really well. One Commissioner mentioned about residents living in mobile homes. That's not an issue, there's no one living in mobile homes. I don't know where you'd park a mobile home, I mean, they're enormous. And about the fifteen hundred feet in the, that was talked about, I think that is way too short. I think you should get seventy-two hours in Cupertino. And after that, you know, if you want to make it a mile or five miles, fine, but I think you can't, should not be able to just move across the city and say, oh, look, I moved way far away, so now I can park again. The annual permits, I don't know how you would do that. It, it would, it would be a permit that allows you to park your RV in the street for seventy-two hours, how many times a month? I mean, that, it just seems that would be an, an impossible thing to enforce. And I would not favor guest permits for parking RVs on the street. I think that's tot- totally unmanageable. The temporary permit, if someone is coming to Cupertino to visit, and we would issue them a temporary permit to park their RV on the street, like, like what street would they park on? Would it be anywhere in the city? I just think it's not a good idea. If they're visiting Cupertino in an RV, they need to find, um, one of the temporary RV parks where you have to pay to, um, pay to camp. Per one of the residents, the overheight vehicles should not be parked near retail ever. The, I know exactly that problem on, um, overbeach, it's not, yeah, it's by Target. It's, uh, yeah, it's a big issue. And I've tried to go across from Marina to the Target parking lot, you just can't see anything. I don't know why the Apple buses need to use that as their waiting area. Somebody mentioned cities being sued over this, and Mountain View is sued for other reasons. They were saying, oh, we're going to tow vehicles immediately for violating the ordinance, and that was not legal. I think we, I don't know if I said this, we should copy San Jose regarding van lords. And finally, as Peggy pointed out, section eleven dot two-eight dot oh-twenty, we already do not allow, it's not just sleeping in vehicles. You can't live in your vehicle in the city of Cupertino. And it's not just an RV issue, the RVs are the big issue, but there's also the issue of, um, as my neighbor told me this morning, some aggressive and scary people living in vans and threatening residents. And you, you don't know, you know, when you rent an apartment, there's vetting. When you own a house, there's vetting. But just having people park on the street indefinitely, and I see it out on, um, Torrey and on Whitney Way. And I actually know the person, and that person's not really threatening, although, um, they are, they have other issues. So I would like to see the signs like other cities in California do at the entrances that specify, you know, and I looked at some of the signs online, it just says, you can't live in your vehicle in, in this city. And I think, you know, that might be an easier thing to enforce than having all these complex, um, ordinances regarding our, RV permits. And these will inconvenience RV owners, the permits, just like permit parking, uh, like in Peggy's neighborhood, it inconveniences the homeowners. There's just no way around that. So, yeah, permits are an inconvenience, but, you know, perhaps it's the only, you know, only way. I, I guess I would support option one, um, but not with the fifteen hundred feet. It would have to be a different distance. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw, would you care to comment on option two versus option one? I believe option two is the one that actually favors residents in only issuing these permits to residents. So is there a reason you would support option one and not option two?
So I was trying to figure out this idea about somebody can specify an interse-, excuse me, intersection as their address. And apparently, it is true at least for voter registration and for public schools. So I'm not sure option two would be a good solution.
But would you consider providing that as a recommendation to staff to build a solid enough definition that allows multiple utility bill checks that were, achieve that definition for the purpose of this? Something to think about.
Yeah, you know, I think we've all gone through the, um, residency verification for public schools, at least if your kids go to, um, FU HSD. It's utility bills, it's a lease, or, you know, proof of ownership, or what was the, I forget the third one. I guess driver's licenses. But this is just getting really complicated.
So, so if I read option one, though, it's really no different than today, except we are increasing the distance and then requiring it to be parked away for seventy-two hours, and then we're adding a permit to the process, but it's fundamentally still the same issue, whereas option two actually is more punitive on non-residents.
Yeah, I, I need, I would need to see them up on the screen again.
Can we have staff project? Is it possible to share on the screen?
Okay, option one-
Can we share option two? And, and while we're doing that, I just want to make some brief comments here. I, I, I hear my fellow Commissioners say, we're, we're surprised you're spending so much time on this. And I asked my fellow Commissioners, if you lived in that neighborhood, would you be saying the same thing? If you lived opposite these RVs, would you be saying the same thing? If you had kids that you had to drop at Happy Day, and you saw these RVs around your kids when they were playing outside, would you be saying the same thing? I think we are here because we are giving back to the community our time to be able to do the best for the community and balance the diverse set of inputs we all get. And all of us are here to find the best balance across these difficult choices that we're dealing with. And I also want to point out, this is one of those unique issues where we have a, a section of the business community, a section of the developer or applicant community, and a section of residents all looking for public safety in these areas. And, and it's not often that these three segments come together. You know, we often hear residents talk about, I don't agree with the developer and so on. But here is an example where our business community, our Chamber of Commerce, our applicants who have projects in the city are all asking us to fix this problem. And we, as a council, as a community, as a commission, are looking to drive housing units. And these housing units don't sell themselves. If you put housing units in an area that is surrounded by RVs and homeless, guess what? Nobody's buying those housing units. So we can't be serious and say we need more housing, and yet not create the conditions where buyers will come and buy those houses. And so I urge my Commissioners to think about, when you support housing and you support these applicants, you really want to think about what will make those units sell so that they will build? What will make it such that they will get financing? And how do we make this a city that attracts buyers and attracts residents? And does not create questions in their mind, because the areas that we are redeveloping are areas that are surrounded by problem, uh, situations on the street. And, and so this is not just a matter of helping out one constituency, it's a matter of taking a balanced view across all of our stakeholders. And I particularly also want to support our hospitality business in the city. I've heard many of our residents talk about, we're losing TOT. We need to support our hotels because TOT is a critical part of our revenues. How are we gonna get the TOT if we're gonna put RVs all around the hotels and they don't want to stay there? So I think it's critical that we keep in mind all of our hospitality businesses. We keep in mind our small businesses, we keep in mind our daycares, our Chamber of Commerce. And most importantly, we also keep in mind our bicyclists. I mean, I hear our fellow Commissioners here support bicyclists, but how do you bicycle on these streets with RVs all over the street? It'd be terrifying for the bicyclist to have to pass the RV, uh, and then deal with traffic. And I've seen that situation. I drive down this stretch every day on my way to YMCA or, or other, uh, kids' programs on Bandle. And so I'm on this road every day, and I see the cyclist, and it is a safety issue. So I would be supportive of taking action. I think we have heard this once before already. Uh, I think we, we brought this back a second time, but I would be supportive of action. Let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I'm interested in hearing what other Commissioners have to say.
So can we see option two again here?
Yes, please, Vice Chair.
Um, while you're studying, let me, um, comment on this really quick. So I know that there's some disagreement over whether we should be revising this ordinance, and I would say that I think we could all agree generally, though, that there is a loophole and the loophole should be closed, which is that currently, as long as a vehicle moves any amount, it is counted as moving. So that, you know, I think if we are having trouble agreeing on the options, you start with option three as kind of the, the base level, which is that all vehicles need to be moved after seventy-two hours. As for, I, I do want to make sure that whatever we put in is enforceable. As you can see through tonight's discussion, we have many parts of the Muni code that are not being enforced. And the last thing I want to do is add more code that is really not enforced. So, um, in option one, I would question the daytime and nighttime parking exceptions. I think, um, restricting oversized vehicles to two hours between six AM and eight PM is, it's going to be really hard to enforce, um, and that's just going to end up adding to the, the Muni code in ways that, that are not really realistic. Same with the nighttime parking exception, one hour between eight AM and, eight PM and six AM. Most people will not really be complaining about one hour. So I would, I would go for simplicity. And then, secondly, I would ask that we consider more signage on high-frequency locations. I did drive by today, and I counted on Alves, there were eleven RVs, and on Bandle, there were three. So that's a very high-frequency area. I think being able to properly communicate what the city policy is is kind of a courtesy to anyone that's parking and driving. And so we should consider additional signage, not just at city entrances, but also on those streets. And then, um, something I've seen other cities do is, uh, if someone goes past citation phase and they actually end up getting towed, we, we should really be giving a warning notice with, with some time to rectify before towing. Another thing, I think, you know, when it comes to increasing accountability, it would be great if whatever we end up implementing, at the, we do a sort of one-year evaluation after the start of whatever new ordinance is implemented, to understand whether or not it's effective. And, you know, your KPI could be as simple as a number of complaints, but we would want to see the number of complaints going down over a year. Um, and if we see that whatever we implement, um, there's no decline in complaints, or maybe a very small decline, then maybe that's a sign to us that we need to revisit whatever we have implemented. then maybe that's a sign to us that we need to revisit whatever we have implemented. I do think that it is important, I think Commissioner Lynn Skog mentioned this, to understand the situation of the RVs and the dwellers that are in them. Uh, I, I understand that that is a resource issue for the city, like you would have to send a service worker out. But you know, understanding what their employment situation is, just general living situation would be helpful. And I would also support doing further exploration of, you know, when, when cities. So one city that I've looked at is the city of San Jose that has worked a lot on its RV policy. And, and before they implement an ordinance, they actually reach out to the inhabitants of the RVs and give them a notice, educate them on the new policy that will be taking effect and also help them with resources, you know, places they can go to, things like that. So to the extent that the city, you know, we know that the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church is not really an option. So to the extent that we can put together other options, collaborate with other local churches, maybe make them part of community grant funding or something like that. So that when, when this ordinance does take effect for any of these, you know, 20 or so RVs, if, if a few of them happen to need further help, they have somewhere to go, that would be great. But yeah, so my, my general inclination is, is to go for more simplicity and enforceability of the code than, you know, policies that, that are overly.
So Vice Chair, I'm trying to understand, are you supportive of option two or option one or none of these options or?
So I think least desirable would be option two, because we do want to allow people from outside the city to obtain permits to park if they wanted to. You know, that's just not being welcoming as a city if we say no one can get a permit aside from a resident. So.
As a point of clarification, would that be visitors to the city that would have residents file on their behalf for permits?
Uh, it could also be someone coming in for commercial purposes. I'm, I'm not sure what the, you know, extent of the use cases would be, but we just wanna make sure that we're, or like, you know, maybe tourists or whatever, we just need, that don't know anybody here, but they happen to be coming through. We need to make sure that we're not, not allowing anyone that would want to get a permit and come through legally.
And so then trying to understand, are you then in favor of option one? Or I heard support, broader support earlier for an annual permit for residents that can then be shared with a non-resident. Are we hearing support for something that's more?
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
I think I may have a, a solution that maybe Vice Chair can get behind. What if we do a combination? So it's option one for non-residents with the, with an online application. So, so they don't have to come during, you know, nine to five, Monday to Friday. Online application, get rid of the no day, the daytime, nighttime hour exceptions. And, and the five times a month seems really a lot, as several people have commented. So I would make that five times a year. Uh, if they're non-residents, I don't know why they need to come here five times a month. And then add an annual free resident permit for residents proven through a utility bill or something like that. Um, and limit that to one per household. So we, you know, again, get rid of the van warnings. So, and then again, as, as the Vice Chair mentioned, invest in non-displacement support, like safe RV parking programs. Um, and then of course, put the signage on the city periphery. So that would be my, my suggestion.
I would add to that additional signage along Alves and Bandly.
Oh, actually, good point. So actually, I think beyond signage, I think we can combine this with, just say there are some streets where you can't park even with a permit. And, and Alves can be one of those. And maybe Rainbow could be another one, where we just have streets that are just no RVs allowed even with a permit.
So I'm, I'm trying to understand, so the, what is the stipulation on how much they should move? Do we think it's 1500 feet? Is it a mile? Is it outside the city boundaries? Where do our commissioners stand on? Commissioner Sharf?
Yeah, well, 1500 feet is obviously absurd. It's, that's like one block. You know, I would prefer.
Outside the city.
That you get 72 hours in Cupertino and then you're out. But if you wanna say, change it to five miles, you know, that would essentially, you know, achieve the same thing. I would not like the idea of, right, unless we, we can say no RV parking on certain streets like Alves and Bandly. But I hesitate in this, I hesitate to push the problem just to adjacent streets. It's already starting to go into the Garden Gate neighborhood, if you've noticed.
Yeah, but we're saying permit for the rest of the city, right? So what we're saying is on these streets, it would be no parking even with the permit. But everywhere else in the city, you would need a permit.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And I do agree that that five times a month, I don't know where that came from. Yeah, five, you know, once a month or five times a year, you know, whatever. But, but five times a month for 72 hours, that's already 15 days. Yeah, that's, that, that's not right.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharf. So I'm hearing support for a further distance in terms of 72 hours. And then you have to move five miles and I would actually be supportive of something like that. I don't think 1500 feet does anything. If anything, it pushes the problem into the neighboring streets. So if I, if I visualize that neighborhood, it's just gonna push the problem into the streets at the back, which is full of single-family residences and we'd hate to create unintended consequences. So do we have support for five-mile distance? If we were to go 72 hours and then we push it five miles?
How would you enforce that?
If code enforcement were to hear a repeat complaint for that in a distance that they would measure from the original. So we would leave the implementation to code enforcement, but five miles is measurable.
So can I say, you know? We don't enforce every law, but we have laws that people just adhere to. You know, knowing, you know, oh, if I don't, you know, there's a chance I'm gonna get caught. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna break that law. I'm gonna pay my fare on muni or in Caltrain, even though it's proof of payment. And I probably won't get caught, but I'm gonna do it anyway. So I think getting into this idea that every law needs 100% enforcement, we will never do anything. Because that's, you know, we already see we're not enforcing the no living and no sleeping in vehicles. But if we could enforce that partially, it might solve the whole thing without even needing this, this whole permit parking.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharf. Well, that's a point well made. I think residents tend to be generally law-abiding and these things have an effect. So I'm hearing support for the annual permit online for residents that really simplifies the life of residents. That is, I think, a great idea. I think having a non-resident guest permit that is only five times a year, I think is also an excellent idea. I'd like to see where we stand on this distance of the move, which is, you know, what distance do we think we have support for?
Uh, I have actually less thoughts on the distance and more about the timeframe. So right now, we're saying you cannot stay anywhere for up to 72 hours. And then they have to move somewhere else new after, but they can technically return back to the same location after 72 hours. So you could, I think you could game the system by basically going to many different places, less than 72 hours. So I would, I actually think I have less care about the distance and more that, that it must move to a new location and it cannot return within 72 hours. It should actually be, it cannot return in more than 72 hours.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes, that actually is a good idea and I would be supportive of more than 72 hours. Would you have a time in line, in mind? Would this be one week or? Would you have a suggested time?
Sure, one week.
Almost certainly unenforceable, you know? I don't know how you would enforce that. You, you parked here and now you, you need to leave. You know, if you say five miles away, I'll go three miles away, I'm still out of town. There's no way to enforce that. And then you come back, you know, now I have to track the history of all the places where this person parked. It's enforce, it's completely unenforceable.
So as a point of clarification, I think what, I, I like the idea about a resident annual permit. I think that's a really nice idea. So what that idea does for us is it really separates the problem between residents versus non-residents. And I like the idea about only five per year for non-residents. I think that also limits the amount of abuse of the system. So I think those are great ideas. So now we're really talking about for the non-residents that only get this chance to do this five times a year, how do we make this such that they don't, they do not game the system? Because the residents then, we can talk about, okay, with that permit, what do they do? So this is, this is firstly a question of, okay, for the non-residents, you do not have the ability to get the permit more than five times a year. And when you do get it, it is only valid for, what was the time period? The permit was valid for?
I, I thought the permit is good for 72 hours.
72 hours, okay.
Yeah, it's always 72 hours. So I, I guess, I mean, I, I hear the problem you're trying to solve with the distance and the, you know, number of days or hours before they can come back. But I think to, to Commissioner Feng's point, it's, it's a whack-a-mole thing. And they, and, and you, you, and we talked about this in our last planning commission meeting on this topic also, right? It's like, they can move after 70 hours and, and they can move for 10 hours and come back. They haven't met the 72-hour maximum limit. So there's like so many ways to game that system. We are not gonna be able to plug every single scenario, because it, there's an infinite number of them. So I, I, I think let's keep it simple. I think 1500 feet, fine. I mean, honestly, I don't think it matters because it's unenforceable to Commissioner Feng's point. I, I think let's not spend a ton of time and effort trying to come up with, you know, is it 1500 feet? Is it three miles? Is it five miles? Is it after 72 hours? Is it after a week? Because, you know, I can park there for 70 hours, leave for two hours and come back and I'm compliant. Right? I could leave after 24 hours and come back 10, two hours later and I'm compliant. There's so many ways to game the system.
I believe the, the option as written says you will need to be away for 72 hours. And so the question.
After you've been there for 72.
After you've been there for 72, but then you have to be away for 72 hours after that.
Yes, but if I leave before the 72-hour time limit has expired, if I leave at 70 hours, instead of leaving after 72 hours, I can come back anytime.
Right.
Because I haven't maxed out my time. And I can start another clock for 70 hours and I keep moving every 70 hours, another foot, I'm compliant.
You'd have to move this distance that is whatever it is.
And the time is meaningless, because it's, it's an endless game of whack-a-mole. So I wouldn't spend a ton of time on it personally.
Yeah, I, I think the time and the, the points were taken. The time certainly is kind of a whack-a-mole. I think the distance is an inconvenience. 1500 feet is nothing. So if you make it larger, I think that is a, a greater inconvenience. So that's certainly something that I think is a factor. But, but again, I will acknowledge that once we make this a resident annual permit with only five non-resident permits, the non-resident situation hopefully is addressed by the inability to get a permit, which I really like. So appreciate, appreciate the creativity there.
Also, I would recommend a hang tag, because I think if you want after-hours enforcement, it'll make it a lot easier if they can just see a hang tag.
So, so I think we have broad agreement on an annual permit for residents, a non-resident permit that is limited to five times a year. And in terms of the, the actual enforcement of the hours, 72 hours, and then you have to move for, I would test for is, is a week and five miles acceptable? Because then we have a motion and we can go home here.
No, first of all, as much as we like to go home, you know, this is why we're on this commission to solve this issue. So I'm looking at the city of San Mateo, it's much simpler. You just cannot park an oversized vehicle in the public right-of-way, period. Okay? It doesn't say anything, you know, it applies to RVs, it applies to unattached trailers regard. You just can't do it now. So let's do something that just is about oversized ordinances, forget the seven, sorry, oversized vehicles, forget the 72 hours. And, you know, offer a permit to residents that need to temporarily park their RV on the street for loading and unloading.
Right, isn't that what we're doing? Because we are giving the residents a permit. And then the non-residents, we have a five-year clause for any visitors. But the rest of the time, they're going to get cited right away, basically.
So why are we talking about 72 hours then?
The, the 72 hour is only for a permit holder.
Okay.
So for the non-residents, so let's take the case of the Bandly Drive. If those are established as non-residents, they will be unable to get a permit more than five times a year. But during those five times as well, what should be the behavior, which is the 72 hours and then?
Wait, so the non-residents can get a permit?
Five times a year.
Okay, yeah, I would not favor that.
Could you, could you comment on, could you add more? I mean, what, trying to understand what you're getting at there.
No, I, I'm looking for a way that we just don't allow the oversized vehicles.
For non-residents or residents?
For anyone except residents that need it to like load and unload their RV before a trip.
Can I, can I maybe add something that might solve Commissioner Sharf's issue? Is, we talked about this earlier and maybe that got, didn't get captured, but on selected streets like Alves and Rainbow, we just say it's prohibited to park an RV at any time, even with a permit.
Yeah, but doesn't that just shift the problem to the next street?
And then it shifts it to residential neighborhoods when they get a permit. That's why I'm saying, you know, a homeowner that needs to park their registered RV to that address on the street temporarily for a day or a couple of days, find a way to allow it. And for, for everything else, it's just the oversized vehicle ordinance. You can't park those anywhere in the city.
Yes, so if I, if I were to play back what Commissioner Sharf is saying, we would not do the non-resident permit. Is that right?
That's right. And people that are visiting the city, well, it's nice that they're visiting, but we're not an RV park.
Yes, and, and if they're parking in a hotel, that is a.
Right, yeah, they can park in the hotel parking lot.
And if they're parking in a shopping center, similarly for lunch or dinner, they're in a private right-of-way. Would staff like to say something?
I did wanna loop back to that, the windows, the three hour, the two-hour window and the one-hour window. We designed that so that people who were traveling through the city and needed to, you know, rest for a minute or get a meal could park on the street just in that window. I realize it's difficult to enforce, but if you don't have that window, then people traveling through the city can't stop. Or if they're gonna stop, they need to find a restaurant with a big parking lot or something like that. I, I can understand both ways, but I just want to make sure that you're focused on that.
Right, no, I, I understand the intent of it. I appreciate the intent, but, but I think to, to the Vice Chair's, it's, it's not enforceable, right? I mean, no matter what time of day, if somebody's parked there that's non-resident, they can be like, oh, I just got here. And yeah, I'll be soon, so it doesn't.
Right, so I'm still hearing broad support for an annual permit for residents, is that right? Commissioner Sharf? Annual permit for residents?
Right, yeah, if they, right, an annual permit that like five times a year, you know, you, I mean, I don't know how you really enforce that five times a year, but.
Okay.
Again, you know, most people will comply. We're really trying to solve a specific problem here of, you know, the oversized vehicle parking permanently on the streets.
Right, so, so a permit that is available five times a year, that would allow you to park for 72 hours and then you'd have to move a minimum distance of five miles.
Yeah.
For the sake of getting them out of the city, not to return for how long? Commissioner Sharf? Not to return for 72 hours or a week?
Well, they, they don't have a permit, they can't return, right?
Well, no, at the time they have a permit, if you have a permit, after 72 hours, you leave the city to be gone five miles, only to return after a week?
But the permit is not an unlimited permit to, to come as many times as you want, I hope. So I, I don't.
So you're saying a maximum time of 72 hours and you're gone after that?
Right, yeah. I mean, not, you, not this 70 hours, come back, come back.
Okay, yeah, so the permit is valid for 72 hours at, at most, okay. Do we have support for that? I'm, you know, I, I, I think the residents have expressed a lot of concern about this and I think we need to really act. This is one of those rare opportunities when residents, our business owners and our applicants and the Chamber of Commerce are all asking for the same thing. And it's not often that happens. And I'm looking for, do we have a third word to, to move this motion?
Can you summarize what you're proposing? Can you summarize what you're proposing?
The proposal is an annual permit, I'm sorry, a permit five times a year that would allow for a parking for maximum of seventy-two hours in public right-of-way. And in all other cases, oversized vehicle parking is prohibited in the public right-of-way.
So no annual resident permit?
You wouldn't need it. We got rid of any need for permits. Residents wouldn't need a permit.
Sorry, I'm confused. I'm not following.
They're allowed to park in the driveway in their property and if they need to park elsewhere, they get a permit five times a year.
So there is a permit?
Five times a year.
You just said there's no permit and now you're saying there is a permit?
No, we're saying that you get a permit five times a year if you want to park in the public right-of-way. I'm just paraphrasing what your proposal was.
Okay.
Can you confirm, is that your proposal?
Yeah, that's fine, but then, but a minute ago you said, oh, there's never a permit required for residents, but that's not what you're proposing.
We're saying anybody gets five permits a year, resident or non-resident.
I don't support that because, again, it creates, it's punishing our residents and I, they didn't do anything wrong and I don't, you know, it's like, I don't see why we should. So I go back to, it should be a free annual resident permit. I do think we should have a non-resident permit limited to five times a year.
To park where?
Maybe we select streets where they can park. Or, but, or it's easier to suggest streets where they cannot park. So we ban parking on these two streets that are an issue right now. And we can add more if that becomes an issue afterwards. But I think that if we ban permit parking on two of these streets and all the other parkings require either a resident or non-resident permit, that'll take care of the problem.
So I think I'm hearing support for an annual resident permit.
A free annual resident.
A free annual resident permit and a visitor permit five times a year and a maximum of seventy-two hours on the, on these permits, correct?
And a ban on two streets.
And a ban on parking around the, was that a distance within the commercial district? We could say within thousand feet of the commercial district. Was that what the staff report had? That was the previous one, I guess.
I think it was a hundred feet.
A hundred feet is not much, I mean-
It was meant so that you're not parking right in front of the doorways or, I mean, let me go back and see.
I would not support a hundred feet, that is really meaningless.
A one hundred feet, but you could make it much larger.
Wait, one hundred feet like in front of retail or what?
Yeah, that makes sense.
That was the intent of the earlier-
Okay, so I'm hearing support right now for most of this.
No, except, yeah, I would not support the non-resident permit at all. And I'm not sure what the city policy is on cost recovery either because, you know, we have a lot of permit parking zones for cars throughout the city and unfortunately, the residents do have to pay for those permits. It's not their fault that, you know, Deans College is there or Apple is there, but they do pay for those permits. You know, in some cases, they knew that there was a parking issue for the neighborhood that required permits. In some cases, like Apple and Infinite Loop, I don't think they did know. I know, you know, where Peggy lives, it was a problem of Apple employees parking and then walking through the path over to the campus, even though Apple told them not to do that, you know, they still did it. It wasn't illegal.
Okay, so I'm testing for whether we have consensus, so we may let staff go home and we have a reasonable solution that meets the needs of our residents and keeps these offenders out, so.
If I may, I think we have votes, enough votes for one option.
I would like to hear what the vice chair has got to say. I'm hearing Commissioner Sharf say he would not support permits for non-residents.
So for Commissioner Sharf, if this helps you at all on the issue of permits for non-residents? So I did look into the municipal codes of Las Altos, Sunnyvale, San Jose, La Scaredos, Mountain View, basically like our neighboring cities. And the only cities that I see that entirely restrict parking of a trailer or a large vehicle on the street are also cities that have an RV park and a different place for them to go. And so I would kind of view the permit for non-residents as our concession on that front since we do not have a different place for RVs to park.
Okay, so I, in the interest of moving this forward, I'm going to make a motion. Can we get?
Point of order, this is a study session, there shouldn't be any vote.
I believe we can make a motion with a recommendation. Atene Wu, can you please clarify?
While a study session does not require a motion, it seems here for clarity in terms of recommendation to council, it may make sense to go a traditional route, make a motion, have a second and have a vote.
Thank you, Atene Wu. So for the purpose of formalizing our recommendation, I would like to make a motion that I believe largely represents consensus that I heard so far. If staff can help me with codifying this motion, I'm looking for, Atene Andrews, would you be scribing the motion as we walk through this? Are you able to scribe this?
I'll do my best.
Okay, so I would make a motion to allow for an annual resident permit for oversized vehicle parking and up to five non-resident permits per year. And a prohibition on oversized vehicle parking within fifteen hundred feet, was it, of the commercial district? As amendments to the staff recommendation. The rest of the staff recommendation around parking hours allowed still stand. So seventy-two hours maximum for the permit and three-hour daytime and one-hour nighttime grace period.
Wait, you're going from a hundred feet to fifteen hundred feet for the commercial district?
Open to change if someone has an amendment to that or suggestion to a different. A hundred feet doesn't do anything because if you go-
No, no, a hundred is not enough, but I, you know, if someone's parking an oversized vehicle to go to, you know, a restaurant or a store over on Seitch, you know, fifteen hundred feet may be, may be a little far.
Do you have a suggestion?
I don't know.
I'll take other suggestions if there are.
Let's go from a hundred to, you know, seven fifty or a thousand.
Okay, a thousand feet, I'll take a thousand feet. I don't, okay, so I want to recap the motion for the purpose of this group. And I'm moving to recommend an annual permit for residents that is a free permit.
You just changed your motion.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
What did I change?
You didn't put a price on it the first time.
Oh, I will, okay, we will-
Can I take a pass at it?
I believe, I believe we have a motion here for an annual resident permit that would be recommended to be free, a non-resident permit, up to five times a year. And the permit is valid for a maximum of seventy-two hours parking in the public right-of-way with a grace period of three hours daytime parking and one hour nighttime parking. And parking in the commercial district prohibited for up to a thousand feet.
You didn't say how much the non-resident permit will be. It doesn't matter to me, I won't vote for it anyway.
That will be left to staff to propose.
Can we also-
Can we get a second on the motion?
Can I make a friendly amendment or does? I'd like to add additional signage along Alves and Bentley as well as exploration of safe car park options. Yes, those two.
I would accept the addition for additional signage. I don't believe we should tie this to safe car park. I don't believe the city has the resources to fund that. Would you be acceptable to one of those amendments?
For the purposes of discussion, sure, let's accept that first amendment.
So we have a motion and did I hear a second on the vice chair?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second?
So I'd like to make an amendment. I actually, also, I agree we should be looking at funding anti-displacement measures like safe parking or recommending to the city council that they look at funding anti-displacement measures if they're going to be implementing a permit system. And I would also like to ask that we, the permit for the residents, the one-year free resident permit, we limit to one permit per household.
Okay, I'm trying to stay abreast of this now. So we have a motion and a second and a second amendment, correct? And I would accept the amendment to limit the permits to one per household. So if we might include that, one resident permit per year per household.
I would just like to, what keeps a resident from not having seventy-two hours plus seventy-two hours plus seventy-two hours? The seventy-two hours, you're meant to have to leave and come back. So it could be interpreted that you're basically allowing a resident to park their vehicle on the street full-time. So it should be a number, a limited number.
Sorry, but point of clarification, if it's seventy-two hours consecutively strung together, it's no longer seventy-two hours.
Exactly. So if, does the annual permit allow you one seventy-two hour period? Or what is the limitation on the annual permit?
I don't think we have to limit it as, they have to move after every seventy-two hours, right?
So then they would be able to move, whatever the amount of space is that you have indicated? Is it a thousand, is it a thousand? No, I think it's, I guess, five miles? And then they come back and put it in front of their home again for another?
Thank you, Atene Andrews, for that point of clarification. I believe we, in the motion, would like to codify the staff recommendation, which was seventy-two hours and then you have to move seventy-two hours for a maximum distance of-
Minimum distance.
What was the distance that was acceptable?
Fifteen hundred feet.
Fifteen hundred feet, we'll go with that. I'm not getting support for anything else.
Is there a limit of number of seventy-two hours for residents?
Because I do think that you're going to get pushback from other residents that don't want that many RVs parked on the street because currently, they can't do that.
Yeah, that's right.
People will be like, I don't really want to look at the RVs on my street all the time. And now you've set it up so they can be there all the time.
I don't think we're going to see a bunch of residents run out and buy RVs just because they can park for seventy-two hours. Having an RV is an expensive proposition. I don't anticipate we're going to see a run on RVs in the city.
There's already RVs that people own that park on the street permanently when they're not supposed to.
As a point of clarification, what was the staff report suggesting? Wasn't the staff report basically allowing for that?
We were suggesting that you had to get a permit each time you wanted to park for seventy-two hours. I know that's not acceptable, I'm just telling you that's what the suggestion was. And that you could only get, I think it's five of them per month. So it would be limited to those fifteen days. But actually, I think it should be even more limited than that, I mean, my sense.
Five per month is a lot. I mean, that's fifteen days, that's half the month. Of course, you would, under that proposal, you'd have to pay every time, right? So it was forty-three dollars.
Something more restrictive? I think we are looking for a third vote here for a more restrictive policy.
Can you read back the entire policy, please, that we are, or the amendment that we are on right now?
The motion on the table is an annual permit for residents, a non-resident permit for up to five times a year, with the non-resident permit expiring in seventy-two hours and the annual permit allowed for seventy-two hours of parking, after which it has to move at least seventy-two hours for a distance of fifteen hundred feet with a three-hour daytime and a one-hour nighttime grace period. I think the point that Atene Andrews rightly makes is this is not sufficiently restrictive on RV violators that happen to be residents. And I believe there's two votes on the table here for a more restrictive policy that's looking for a third vote if there is one.
If I-
I'd like to hear if the vice chair has a view on a little more restrictive policy than just giving a free pass to residents for a whole year.
No, I would support annual pass for residents. And this is what, the point I brought up earlier is we should evaluate whatever ordinance we pass within a year. The whole goal of the ordinance is to reduce resident complaints. If nobody is complaining about resident RVs, then there actually is no issue. So we really should, whatever is passed, we make a goal to evaluate it within one year, see if complaints have gone down, then it's working. And only if we find that people are complaining a lot about resident RVs do we then revisit and put a more stringent policy upon residents.
Okay, so I believe we, okay.
If I could comment here, I think that, I suspect that not a trivial number of the complaints will be residents complaining about somebody who has an RV and parks it on the street a lot. So that actually is an issue. And I would also, again, I would say, no, I think it is. I mean, I think it is actually. In my neighborhood, there was the guy who had the RV and always parked it on the street. He moved it around a little bit, but I suspect that was probably causing people to complain.
Commissioner Feng, would you be supportive of some? I'm interested in your position.
I'm not supportive of any of these.
Of any?
I think that's the problem here. I'm not.
Appreciate the view.
The problem here is that we have no measurement of what it is that the problem is. Nobody, we had a number of RV owners wrote in, as well as Peggy and Dave, who called in. I don't think anybody's complaining about Peggy or Dave's behavior, right? So I understand that the discussion here is bound it such that for somebody who might be abusing it, that it won't be, you know, you're not making that, making that, you know, you're not defanging it too much. But I think the problem is you're kind of penalizing, you're kind of penalizing the regular owner who generally doesn't have a problem. I mean, you know, even this worrying, you know, when you say you have to move fifteen hundred, that probably means fifteen hundred on a public street. If Peggy wants to move, park on the street for three days and put it in her driveway, it won't be fifteen hundred feet away, but that should be okay, you know? So I really feel, I really feel like, I totally agree. We should decide what it is that we want to achieve with this. We should have a measurement that lets us show whether we are doing better or not. I don't think those things are present here.
So I want to, I want to just recap. We have a motion and a second. The motion is for an annual resident permit that is free, a non-resident permit that is a maximum of five times a year that expires in seventy-two hours. With the resident permit being a seventy-two hour, you have to move after seventy-two hours, up to seventy-two hours after that, a distance of fifteen hundred feet. And with three-hour daytime and one-hour evening grace parking for non-permit holders with additional signage and with oversized vehicle parking prohibited within fifteen hundred feet of a commercial district. That is the motion and we have a second. The chair moved and the vice chair seconded. And I'd like to call the question, let's vote. This vote working?
No.
Chair Sharf is, I mean, yeah. You can change your vote, I believe.
Yeah.
No, it's just his vote. I can clear it?
Yeah, just clear it.
How do you clear this?
Yeah, just clear and vote again.
Okay, here we go. Okay, so the-
The motion carries with Commissioner Feng voting no.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank staff for their efforts. I want to thank commissioners once again for working towards reaching a reasonable outcome. I know this isn't perfect for what everybody asked for, but you know, it is progress and we're certainly targeting that area and hopefully it helps the neighborhood. And I'm hopeful that our residents will be mindful of the neighbors and not impinge their RVs upon their neighbors, so. With that, I think we are done with this agenda item. The next agenda item on the agenda is, there's no public hearings, no old business, no new business. Are there any staff reports?
Do not have any staff reports tonight, chair.
No staff reports, thank you. Are there any commission reports? No commission reports, hearing none. Are there any future agenda items that commissioners would like to suggest? Okay, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.